We'll go ahead and call this special Norwood City Council meeting to order. If everyone can please rise for a moment of reflection and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen.
Here.
Mrs. Hoover.
Here.
Ms. Royce.
Here.
Mrs. Bowling.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Gerton.
Here.
We have all members present this evening.
First item on the agenda, our request to address council. We have three of those. The first is Terry Meeger. If you can state your name and address, and you will have five minutes.
Terry Meeger, 4335 Beach. I'm going to make this short and sweet because you've all heard my complaints. There hasn't been done anything about safety. Tony's brought that up. They were supposed to do something beginning of Phase One. Nothing's been done. I don't understand why you aren't pushing for safety. This is your town. Once somebody gets hurt, that's when it's going to happen. And that'll be on you guys. Because you didn't push it through. You didn't, you know, PLK promised this. Hasn't happened. No safety, no traffic study. Nobody sits there and watches the traffic. Another topic is just the disrespect and disregard for your citizens that you took an oath to stand behind, stand up for, be our advocates. Have you really gone over there and seen the property? Seen how small it is? And they're going to put 48 townhomes on it? I would like to see it in a lower form. It's going to happen. We know that. But why not 2025? Gives you the fire department more room to get around. Amazon trucks. I mean, there's going to be all kinds of stuff going back there. It's not just residents. And again, something's going to happen on that tight of a property with that much going on in it. I mean, 48 townhomes, come on. And just the, just the blatancy of, I think something smells here, something's not right. You guys are just let it go through. And as Tony has pointed out, there's so many ordinances that have been disregarded and not looked into. I mean, if you're afraid of someone suing for that, or after it's all built, then it being looked at, again, it's on you guys. You're the decision makers. You're the ones that were voted by us. Just take your time, look at what's going on, put yourself in our homes. The dust, the construction, we've been dealing with it for five years. Now it's getting close to us. I mean, this is a nice little neighborhood. Let's just keep it smaller. It's just too big. Thank you.
Thank you. The next request to address council is Jim Lynch.
My name is Jim Lynch. I live at 2721 Robertson. I'd like to do a little role reversal. If we could, if I could go ahead and maybe get your guys' addresses and maybe get 50 of my friends and drive up and down your road 40 miles an hour, 45 miles an hour, 50 miles an hour, I don't know, forever, ask council what to do, any help, call the police, any help, nothing happened, how would you guys feel? Would it be nice? Would you be satisfied with what's going on right here? Today, there was so much dust that it went up and I couldn't even see the clock tower from my house. And it just floated on over. I had to go inside. Every one of my air purifiers that I bought for this purpose was all red. Aurora Construction came in, took down the buildings, had to put up with that. But it was better than what it was today. My house is dusty, inside of my garage is dusty. I couldn't get away from it. I had to leave my house today. It was so bad. Now everyone's just sitting there nodding, yeah, 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 yeah. You know, like I said, just give me your addresses, let me go over and just take as much dust as I can, throw it in your houses. Go ahead and put a metal plate in front of your house. You guys can hear that, 247365. It's great. I'm just disgusted.
The next request to address council is Tony Boyle.
Tony Boyle, 2739 Robertson Avenue. Spoke about this plenty of times. Information today will clearly outline that the mayor's explanation to veto's entire council is factually incorrect and extremely deceiving the residents of Norwood. In no way, shape, or form is Robertson fully satisfied all established criteria and requirements adopted by our municipality. The PUD does not establish a clear and comprehensive framework for responsible development. The developers have not met requirements and compliance has not been demonstrated. Approval of this PUD would certainly erode trust in the city and be subject to possible litigation. Current design plans of Robertson South do not align with our community standards, ensure fairness, consistency, or accountability. All seven council members just recently voted responsibly no to this PUD. So I'm asking council members what has changed since then and to please respect the concerns of the residents. Once again, to my knowledge, the fire chief has just signed off on these plans. It's very easy to the fire chief to sign off on these plans when there is an exit road on the plans. There is no exit that has been passed for this development. 2741 Robertson Avenue was not voted into the larger PUD. That was the second ordinance. The mayor vetoed the PUD approval. He did not veto the second ordinance of 2741 not being included. There is absolutely no egress for this. So when you guys present plans to the fire chief, they are completely inaccurate and not factual. To Mr. Keith Moore, I have spoke here many, many times. The ordinances have not changed, nor have I ever received a response in regards to any of the questionable ordinances that are not being followed. To list those again, 115501, 115505, 115506, 115508, 115509, 115511, 115512, 115513, 115514, 115527, which is specific to the PLK in Norwood, still violation of Phase One and Phase Two. Chapter 1117, section 11, chapter 1117, section 2. All those are in violation for this PUD. I'm not sure if you have read them. I presented them to this council many, many a times. All it takes is a simple look in there. Pretty easy to realize that any green space must be usable. Having trees on the side of development on a slope is not accessible or useful to that development. So again, we're in violation of Phase One, we're in violation of Phase Two, we have not accurately looked at the current traffic on Beach and Robertson, we have addressed safety concerns up here for I don't know how many months, none of those have been addressed. I come home today and I find eight-foot-tall construction fences around my entire property line, a 30-foot excavator sitting in my neighbor's driveway. I sit in my house for over an hour, getting sick because I strongly feel there is a gas leak, and I now am not able to stay in my home or be on my property because Duke has to come and assess my property for a gas leak. This development has not even started yet and we already have problems. Once again, I will reiterate, 2741, the ordinance was not passed to allow it into the PUD. This PUD legally has no egress and there is no turnaround for the fire trucks. So presenting plans to the fire department to sign off for that are factually incorrect is irresponsible by this council. As many members said here today, put yourself in our shoes. We've already been dealing with construction for five years. We have another two years of construction for Phase Two, and I don't know about Phase Three. It's not tearing down empty abandoned factories across the street. This is literally dropping 48 townhomes directly into our backyard. And Mrs. Hoover, I know you had mentioned that there was a garage that was built behind you that really, you know, decreased the quality of your life. Imagine what three-story townhomes would do, 48 of them directly in your backyard, would do to our right to reasonable privacy and our right to unreasonable nuance, not to mention the safety that we have all addressed here. Strong concerns that we have, and we feel that council has not taken a specific look at those, and especially our legal department not looking into all the ordinances that are being violated and have been presented to you guys for the last 11 months. Thank you.
The last item under request to address council was an email that was forwarded by Mayor Schneider.
Mayor Schneider, I'm concerned with the recent council vote concerning PLK and the lack of consideration for the current zoning requirements. I am currently considering a large investment in our Norwood facility, but I am now questioning whether we will encounter similar oppositions. When CBTS moved out of Norwood, I called Mayor Williams to apologize and told him I would be back to build my own company here. I did so the next year and made it clear that I would not ask for any tax incentives from the city of Norwood, as I wanted the city to be able to perform the services critical to attracting people and businesses. My mom grew up in Norwood and taught at St. Peter and Paul School. I grew up in Pleasant Ridge and have lived most of my life in this area. I have many friends and associates who share my desire to make sure Norwood continues to be a thriving city. I have supported this community since 1999, when I first moved CBTS here. I can't recall a single instance when I have turned down a request for help, whether it was using my parking lot or helping a neighborhood support organization. I would like to discuss my concerns sooner than later, as I will start spending money on architectural drawings in the coming weeks. Respectfully, Joe Burns, CEO Encore Technologies.
His name is John.
John. So sorry. John Burns, CEO Encore Technologies. Subject: Important Consideration for the Future of Norwood. No reply requested. Hello, all. I want to share with you a message I recently received in my role as mayor from a major employer in our city. This company is considering additional investment in Norwood, but has expressed serious concerns about the current climate within city council and its potential impact on their willingness to invest further. Having served this community for more than 25 years, as both a six-year council member and now six years as mayor, I hear from many residents, business owners, and developers on a regular basis. Over the past month alone, I have spoken with no fewer than 60 individuals who have raised questions and concerns about the city and its path forward. Clearly, people are paying attention to what is happening. A recurring concern I hear is whether the city is positioned to grow in a sustainable, well-managed way. The answer is yes. Our processes are thorough, involving the city administration, the planning commission, including public hearings, and open to the public council committees long before developments such as ever reaches the council agenda. There is a significant due diligence and background work taking place at every step. With that in mind, I ask you to carefully consider where we are as a city in my recent veto of council's denial of the development proposal. While it is my responsibility as mayor to validate ordinances and resolutions, this veto was not a unilateral decision. It came after much discussion, input, and reflection. The intent was not to challenge council, but to reaffirm the importance of our established processes, and these processes have guided Norwood's development successfully in the past and continue to serve us well today. This must not be disregarded or derailed. I stand firmly behind the work that has been done to this point, the planning, revisions, and improvements, and believe this development represents an important step for our future. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this matter. The decisions you make now will make lasting consequences for the future of Norwood. Sincerely, Mayor Victor Schneider.
Thank you. Moving on to the next matter on the agenda, and that is Mayor Victor Schneider's veto statement, and that was regarding the ordinance denying approval of the preliminary PUD Mr. Gerton.
Is it possible to have discussion before a motion?
Yeah, absolutely. Mr. Gerton.
To Mr. Moore, is there anything that you can say publicly about the content of our executive session last night?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Moore.
I would say it's, a lot of it is the same issues that I have discussed publicly. One of the issues, one of the big issues with this one is that the proposed plan satisfies the underlying zoning, and so adding another layer of approvals without a real metric makes this a harder sell if we end up in court, when we end up in court. The mayor's veto doesn't help. It's hard to say, oh, no, everybody agrees when, you know, we have some serious disagreement within the city. There are a host of issues that could potentially be brought against the city on this, and, you know, it's not a slam dunk that we're in good shape. I will say that I would feel much more comfortable defending this if it is approved than otherwise.
Further discussion? Mr. Gerton.
I just want to read a statement. When council voted unanimously to deny PLK's preliminary plans for Robertson South, council was absolutely justified. The plans that the planning commission sent to council for a vote were problematic for multiple reasons. The building department and fire department both had objections. Furthermore, the planning commission interpreted our zoning, like Norwood's zoning code, in a questionable manner. Council was right to deny the plans. Norwood's PUD zoning code gives council the final say in the approval process. The mayor acknowledged this twice in a June 19 meeting of the planning commission. Yet, when the mayor vetoed council's decision, he called our decision arbitrary and illegal. His words will be used against the city in any legal action. When council voted to deny the plans, we were assured a lawsuit would be imminent. At the time, the risk of the lawsuit seemed that in the end, PLK would eventually get their way. However, PLK has come back with new arguments in light of the mayor's veto, and it is my understanding that their new threats against the city are far more legally complicated than earlier, and the city would be risking a great deal more. In the end, I'm deeply sorry to the residents who will be directly affected by this. I think you deserve better from the city, and you deserve a government that works for you, not for corporations.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Bowling.
Yeah, I've also presented a statement. I want to begin by saying how deeply frustrated I am that council has been put in the position of having the final say on this development. Not one member of council holds professional expertise in urban planning, architecture, engineering, or related fields. We are legislators, not designers of streets, garages, or setbacks. These are issues best addressed by the planning commission, the building department, and the zoning board, all of which are staffed with individuals trained for this work. Placing this responsibility at council's feet feels less like thoughtful governance and more like an effort to shift accountability for an unpopular project. From the very beginning, I have questioned why council even has a role in this process. This is not legislation, and it is not within our area of expertise. What this situation makes abundantly clear is that our zoning ordinance need a serious review and reform. We must commit to a comprehensive deep dive so that our codes reflect the kind of future we want for our city, and so that the processes we follow are transparent, consistent, and fair. To be equally clear, I do not support this development in its current form. Unfortunately, both functionally and very possibly legally, council is unable to stop it. The process that guides developments of this scale, the mayor's appointment of the planning commission, the early meetings with developers, the presentation of properties, and ultimately the review before the planning commission have already run their course by the time the plan reaches us. At that point, council is very nearly powerless to change or block it. While I find that deeply concerning, it is, at present, the process. If I lived next door to this project, I would be furious. I want the neighbors affected to know that I hear you, I see your perspective, and I share your frustration. I empathize with the stress and disappointment this has caused, and I feel strongly that the current system has backed both you and council into a legal and procedural corner that leaves us all without the tools we need to achieve a better outcome. This entire experience has illuminated just how broken this process is. We must fix it because our community deserves a system where decisions are made by experts, where accountability is clear, and where residents' voices have real weight before it is too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mrs. Franzen.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Gears. I am not happy, angry, and frustrated about how this whole process has happened. It's clear to me that this process is not working as intended, and I feel we need to change it to prevent a situation like this from reoccurring. We in council have been forced to balance our duty as stewards of the city without also becoming an unnecessary roadblock for necessary changes to make sure Norwood can continue to survive and eventually thrive. As part of this process, we have been asked to trust that this planning was done properly, that others were handling the proper reviews, that it would all work out in the end. At times, we were provided with incomplete erroneous and misleading information, often without adequate time to review and consider it, and then told we were legally obligated to make a decision under those pressures. Faced with the choice to trust the administration and planning commission's reassurance of good faith or else jeopardize needed investment in development for the city, in the spirit of cooperation, we chose to believe those reassurances. In the end, it is clear those reassurances were incomplete, and now we are faced with what I feel is an impossible situation. In the last week, I've learned a lot more about the potential legal consequences of overriding this veto, and the money that we would have to pay would come from the taxpayers. It is not just a little bit of money. It's also a battle that would be, would be a hard road to hoe, I would say, from what I can understand. Many of our residents have justified concerns about this development and frustration of the process by which it was approved. I share those concerns and frustrations, and I have tried to center the best interests of Norwood as a whole, and those would be affected directly. I also have to try to protect Norwood from the exposure to lawsuits while also pressuring the development to be done way in the fits of the character of the Norwood that we all love. Unfortunately, those means have been proven utterly inadequate. I must now choose to do what many of my constituents ask and vote to disallow the development, knowing that it will result in this lawsuit that will be difficult to face in court, cost Norwood many dollars in the process, and then ultimately still not stop the development as planned. Because that, I feel, will be the end result. We go through months of court cases, and then at the end, it still happens, and nothing that I've done or said made any difference. But I don't improve, I don't want this to be, I don't want what I say or do here to say that I think this development is great and that it should go forward exactly as it is. I don't approve of how this process has unfolded, and I am extremely critical of any future uses of the same process. I'm frustrated by the whole process, and I want to, I apologize. I must do what I must, I must do what I can to protect Norwood as a whole, even if it means hurting those who I truly care about and feel for. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to share a statement, too. It in some ways echoes what we've had, but I don't want to defer on the chance to comment and risk that being, you know, interpreted in whatever kind of way. So I just want to start by stating that I'm absolutely not in favor of the PLK Robertson South development as currently proposed. Over the last three weeks, I've learned new information about the legal precedent of our situation, and there seems to be two paths forward. Veto the mayor's veto, go to court with PLK, knowingly risk a few hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer money on litigation, and maybe end up with the same development plan as we have now, or possibly an even more egregious build. Or two, allow the mayor's veto, allow the preliminary plan to go forward, and disappoint a lot of residents in the process with the project that I certainly want in my backyard. Those are the two options that seem to be on the table tonight, and both of them suck. But I'd like to shed light on this kind of false dichotomy or this false choice and reveal the reality of what's going on here. The reality is that the Robertson South plan may very well have been effectively approved on June 19 at the planning commission. Norwood operates as a statutory city. We don't have our own charter. We are governed in a templated way as provided by the state of Ohio. Those laws are the underpinning of our existence. In matters like this, council sets the law or the code, and that is our legislative duty. From there, it's mostly an administrative process. In other words, it's mostly the mayor's show. What happens is the mayor goes out and recruits developers, the mayor invites those developers to bring a plan forth through his planning commission. The planning commission is comprised of the mayor's employees and appointees. The planning commission hosts public hearing where residents can plead their case, and there's no process for having council involved in the process at that stage. And at the time that the plan is recommended by the planning commission, it's essentially final, or at the very least, it requires six of seven council members to reject the planning commission recommendation. And if council were to want to change zoning, well, guess what? That goes through the planning commission as well. So even though these proceedings have carried on for three months, PLK's Robertson South preliminary plan may have essentially been a done deal on June 19. It's the planning commission's job to check for adherence to the laws, and in their assessment, the plan conforms. If you disagree with that assessment, talk to the planning commission about it. But that is their administrative task to carry out. Because PLK is not asking for exceptions, special treatment, or variances, and because the planning commission has approved the preliminary plan, we are asking for litigation by rejecting it. And to be sure, this is like a hard, nauseating, terrible pill to swallow, because the implications are significant considering the parade of development projects coming down the pike. Quality Inn, Allison Ave Elementary, Norwood Plaza, Zombiel Site, the list goes on. And for any future project, if the developer is not asking for an exception to the underlying code, if the planning commission approves it, the city may not have the right to deny it in light of the developer's property rights. If the developer is asking for something different than the law allows, like in 2020 with the Josephs along Wasson Way, council can reject that variation, but that's not the case here. So what can we do to make this better in the future? One option would be for Norwood to draft its own charter, its own governing document, and break free from the state's standardized form of governance. That would allow us to create our own process for evaluating development decisions. That's a huge endeavor and more of a long-term thing. In the near term, my belief is that council needs to enlist outside experts to upgrade our codes related to land use and development, many of which are dated 1983 or 2000, 2003. But for tonight, the harsh reality is that the fate of this project might have been decided on June 19 when the planning commission approved the preliminary plan. At the very least, we have a legal fight on our hands if we were to veto the mayor's veto. I would strongly recommend that residents address their concerns to the mayor. He and his employees are the ones that check on adherence, that enforce the laws, that a lot of the things that you all are complaining about the adherence to are in fact in his purview. And I would further recommend that residents attend the planning commission's future public hearings and have their voice heard there before it's too late. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. So the item is on the agenda. If there is no motion to override the veto, then we will move on to the next item on Any further discussion on that matter? Mrs. Hoover.
Thank you. I would like to respond to the residents. I know that this is very, not what anyone was wanting in this room, and that we will continue, this is a preliminary, and that we can continue to have conversations, we can continue to push for the things that our residents want. And I'm aware that there's the issue of the traffic study. Those are things that we are not falling on deaf ears. I want to let you know, Mr. Boyle, I did find out that there was an update in 2024 to that traffic study. I'm also wondering if it might be helpful, I'm not an attorney, I'm aware that there's been a list of concerns that you have, ordinances that you feel are not, we are not applying correctly. And I do want to let you know that we have had conversations with our law director and the building department, and I have been assured that while those are a concern to you, that we are being told that those are not applicable for various reasons. So I'm not saying, oh, you're lying. We have listened to those, and they, and we are being told by our legal experts that they We have listened to those, and they, and we are being told by our legal experts that that's not in our purview. Another thing I would like to just add, I know that there is another concern about dust issue. That is absolutely something that we need to follow up on and can, so we can work on those things. So this is not a done conversation, this is an ongoing conversation. One of the things I also want to share is I've been really, these council, we've had some really hard conversations. I think everyone sort of fell about on the same place but from different angles. I'm not sure anyone on council is excited about this development, just I think we all feel like it is larger than we would like, and we will continue to try to work within our, within our lanes. One of the things that we talked about moving forward was to have all future developments go through the Economic Development Committee so we can start having these conversations much, much sooner. I did watch, I think, all of the Planning Commissions, and I did see many folks there, and I know, I heard you, I'm not sure that you felt heard, and what are ways that we can, to facilitate that? And I think one way would be to have council have a seat in that conversation much earlier on. So that's something that we've talked about, and I would like to do for the next item on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Franzen.
Yeah, the last thing I'll say is that this is one battle, and then not every, not every battle can be won, but that doesn't mean that the fight is over. And that's all I can hang on to right now as I'm trying to still, try to do my best to represent the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm struggling to figure out what to say. Last week, everything was in our purview. It didn't matter what it was, it was our business. Backyards, bedroom, like it doesn't, last week, everything was in our purview. Now, we are, you know, not by me. I've said this the entire time, we've been overreaching. There are certain things administrative does, and there are certain things that we as a legislative body does. These are two separate things. We have been overreaching. Last week, it was all in our purview. So now, we're basically being told again that our vote doesn't matter. You know, my stance has not changed. I am with PLK. I love the development. I think what they're doing is awesome. I think these residents here today have legitimate concerns. They're upset, they need us to stand by them, and I don't know what's changed, you know, where the backbone is, but I, you know, I don't know if it's too late, but I'll make the, I'll make the, I'll make the motion to override the mayor's veto. I'll make that motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Garten.
A second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
No.
Mrs. Hoover?
No.
Ms. Royce?
No.
Mrs. Bowling?
No.
Mr. Moore?
No.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes.
With a vote of two in favor and five against, that motion fails. Mr. Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate that, guys, that, you know, this is the way our government works. I just, I'm concerned about our residents that have concerns that we are not addressing. So it would be my wish that these residents are heard, and we stand behind them. PLK gets to further their development, because I believe it's a great development, but I believe our residents need us at this moment, and we should be there with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Moving on to the next item on the agenda, and that is regarding Montgomery and Maple, senior 55-plus affordable housing development.
Dear Mr. Schneider, the purpose of this letter is to apprise your office that Burge and Hell Development and PLK Communities plan to be the managing members of a residential rental development located in or within a one-mile radius of your political jurisdiction, and will submit an application to utilize the multifamily funding programs of the Ohio Housing Financing Agency, OHFA, for the development of this property. Montgomery and Maple is a new construction 178-unit, age-restricted, 55-plus, affordable housing development located in Norwood, Ohio. The community is designed to provide high-quality, energy-efficient housing for seniors, combining modern amenities with long-term affordability. As part of a broader effort to support aging and place in free-up family-sized homes in the surrounding neighborhood, Montgomery and Maple represents a critical investment in inclusive, sustainable housing infrastructure. The proposed development will be financed with tax-exempt bonds, 4% low-income housing tax credits, federal energy tax credits, Cincinnati Development Fund, affordable housing financing, and permanent debt. Development team, developers managing members, Burge and Hell Development, PLK Communities, general contractor, BHAM Construction, property management, Burge and Hell Asset Management. Property address, 4747 Montgomery Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45212. Number of units, 178. Programs to be utilized in the project, 4% income housing tax credits. Right to submit comments. You have the right to submit comments to OHFA regarding the proposed project's impact on the community, and objection to the project must be submitted in writing and signed by a majority of the voting members of the legislative body. Comments must be received by OHFA within 30 days of the mailing date of this notice. The person to be notified at OHFA and their address is Director of Multifamily Housing, Ohio Housing Finance Agency, 2600 Corporate Exchange Drive, Suite 300, Columbus, Ohio, 43231. OHFA will provide a written response to any objections submitted under the terms outlined above. Sincerely, Sam Rogers.
Thank you. Mrs. Hoover.
I'm moved we receive and file the letter.
Motion by Mrs. Hoover to receive and file the letter. Mrs. Franzen.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Franzen. Any discussion? Mrs. Hoover.
Could we invite them to come to an Economic Development Committee meeting?
Do not see why there would be any opposition to that?
Thank you.
Mr. Moore.
Yes, Mr. Gears, thank you for calling on me. Can I, can I understand, so this says this is dated September 3rd, council is obligated to reply by October 3rd, which is this Friday, and we just received this letter a few days ago. Why, why was there a 22-day delay on receiving this, such that we have eight days to presumably speak now or forever hold our peace with this letter?
So I did, because of the timing of putting this agenda together, I added it onto the agenda, and then afterwards, did receive confirmation that the letter, the mailing date was actually September the 16th. So council does not have to act before October 3rd. If council, well, basically, any action that council would take as far as requests or objections, we could have the Law Department draft for our first meeting in October, and that would also require the signatures of everyone from council on those letters.
And so there is, there is more time, that is helpful to know.
Yes.
So we have beyond this Friday to schedule a committee meeting. Where, may I ask, is this project more broadly with regard to the Planning Commission and in light of other conversations today? Where does, where does this fit into the process?
Mayor Schneider.
One is, the letter was received by the city, by my office, the mayor's office, and by the building department at the same time. It came through certified mail, it came on the 16th, and that was the first question I asked was, this is post-dated, like, what are we doing here? So the, and Keith Moore asked that question, too, is when was this actually received here? So that was clarified pretty quickly. The information we received here, this is the first that the city has really gotten some plans and a little more information. I would like to read the project narrative, if that, if council so desires, just to help other people understand what is potentially coming, and I know that I would prolong this meeting a little bit, but the property's two four-story buildings with interior corridors, housing 112 one-bedroom and 66 two-bedroom units, restricted to those earning between 50 to 70% of the AMI, which is the average median income. Designed to foster vibrant, supportive environment, the development will serve as a gateway to the Norwood community and offer amenities such as a fitness center, computer, lab business center, outdoor community gathering, green space, free Wi-Fi. So it's a pretty robust development that's going to go in there. This is actually just the first part of the process for them to try to start securing financing for the property, but we have, the Planning Commission hasn't seen that plans have came to the Planning Commission yet, but they will. Sure.
Mrs. Bowling.
Just to clarify through the president, Mr. Moore, the objection that council could submit would only impact their funding tools through the OHFA, correct?
Mr. Moore.
Correct.
Mayor Schneider.
If I may, it is not, it is not saying submit, it's submit comments. The comments would be submitted, and even if you objected to it, that doesn't mean that they wouldn't be able to get the financing. It's not like council has control here of whether they get the financing or not. It'll be reviewed by the organizations that are going to provide potentially the low-income and tax housing credits and all of that, and it could bear some weight on them getting it, but what I'd say, what I'd say is, in this situation, the administration, we can, we can send, the mayor, you know, the council can send, you know, comments on it, but it's, you're not going to close, you're not going to close the door. I guess if we're thinking about you object to it, and it won't happen, that's just one part of it, you know?
Mrs. Bowling.
I'm not saying that I have an objection, I'm just clarifying that the comments that they are requesting are not surrounding the entire development and all of the intricacies of the plans, they are specific to the funding tools.
Yes.
Mrs. Franzen.
Thank you, and thank you for the clarification, Mrs. Bowling and Mr. Mayor. I'll be really interested to see how this development progresses, and like I said earlier, I hope that we're able to be a part of the process earlier and be more fully informed so we can more adequately address concerns that residents have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Schneider.
I hear you, and I hear city council loud and clear that you want this going into economic development or community council, or community development. I recognize that fully, and I'm sure we'll work closely together. It's not a battle, we'll work closely together to make sure good product is put in place.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor by Mrs. Hoover, seconded by Mrs. Franzen, is to receive and file the communication. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. We have no absent members. Mr. Moore.
Would it be worth it to schedule a economic development meeting to put this into as a next step to ensure a response by the, presumably, we need to be before the October 14th meeting, such that it could be sort of signed off on by all the members at the October 14th meeting?
Correct, because the Law Department will need some time to draft whatever comments and thoughts there are coming from council and/or that committee prior to council being available to sign the letter at the October meeting. Mrs. Bowling.
As the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, my intention was to reach out to PLK to see if there were dates where they were available to come attend and answer questions, which I suppose we could do now. Is that all right, Mr. President?
Yes, it is. Mr. Oaks.
Good evening, MCOs, PLK Communities. Be happy to set something up. I don't know right in front of me, I'd like to throw out the opportunity to, our co-joined venture developers out of Indianapolis, see if they would like to come down and speak with us, but be happy to set that up with whomever that needs to be.
Yeah, so I will collect a couple of dates with PLK directly and present them to the members of the Economic Development Committee. I find the dates that work for everybody.
Mr. Moore.
Thank you. Mr. Oaks, if, I'm not sure what your purview is within the PLK operation as it relates to the day-to-day, but I hope that what these residents are experiencing, you know, lands with you, I hope that you have a notepad full of things to follow up with people about, and like, I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that PLK is, in some ways, like tearing apart our community, and so I hope that, you know, the gravity of, you know, what they're bringing forth is heard and responded to.
Yeah, it is. PLK will continue to invest in the city of Norwood. We believe that the city and PLK have been great partners, and we hope to continue that relationship for a long time coming, but understand, I respect your comments. We will continue to be good neighbors.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? Mrs. Bowling, it sounds like you will coordinate the dates with everyone, and then we can publish and announce the dates and everything. Thank you. We have no absent members. Is there a motion to adjourn? Mrs. Franzen.
I'm moved we adjourn.
Is there a second? Ms. Royce?
A second.
Seconded by Ms. Royce. Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Franzen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoover?
Yes.
Ms. Royce?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowling?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Garten?
Yes.
Mr. Brayden?
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting yes, the motion carries. This meeting is hereby adjourned.